You still hear me, Tim?
Yes, I can.
You're loud and clear, Commissioner.
That's what I like to hear.
Tim, do you see Lauren signing on you or in the waiting room?
She just joined.
All right, thank you.
I don't have you on the screen, Doc.
Um, I've got, I have my video up. Does everybody else see me?
Yeah, I can see you.
Alls I can see is myself.
Well, you gotta go up, go up into the right-hand corner of your screen and there should be a speaker view. You should be able to change that, Commissioner, I think. Am I right, Tim? Can't hear you, Commissioner Johnson.
Have you?
Are you okay?
No, Tim's coming over.
All right, we'll hold.
Hey, just testing. Can you hear me?
Ten-four, you're good to go.
Hey, Doc, and I'm gonna send you a text message about something I'm gonna do here in a few minutes. I gotta, I'm gonna, I'll let you know.
Go ahead and tell him.
Go ahead and go, Doc. I think we're okay.
We're okay, okay. Um, all right, everybody, ready to go. Good morning. I'd like to call this Tuesday, November 17th, 2020 County, Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. There is a quorum present, all five commissioners. And with that, would you please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. Before we approve the agenda, Commissioners, I think it'd be appropriate for us to take a moment of silence and also keep in your hearts the thought of Tim Hart's family. As Tim, who is one of our IT support staff, has lost a dear family member, his wife Cheryl this last weekend, who has been under several weeks of care at our hospital and passed away this weekend. So let's take a moment of silence for her and her family and Tim, as well as, this is a good time maybe to think of all the other things that are very near and dear to us, whether it's COVID, whether it's our armed forces, as well as our, our government as it is today. Moment of silence. Thank you, Commissioners. With that, our first order of business is to approve the agenda. Commissioners, we received a note message yesterday from our county clerk that Red Desert Clinic is requesting a letter of support as they're applying for some COVID money and they need a letter from us indicating that they are a legit government agency as they are a special district on their own. So I would request that we approve the agenda, amending it to add Tab L, a letter for Red Desert Clinic, letter of support, and our clerk will present that. With that, Commissioners, the other is, is, we already have topics for executive session, but I'd also like to add contracts. So if there's no other amendments for the agenda, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the amendments I mentioned.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Commissioner Shanefield.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Shanefield. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign, motion carries. We have approval of the minutes of November 3rd, 2020. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes of November 3rd of 2020 as presented.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. Our next item is Tab B, acceptance of the bills. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith.
I move that we approve the bills, the abates, the rebates, and the vouchers as presented.
We have a motion to approve the bills as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second that one.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose, pose, same sign. Our next agenda item is county residents' concerns. And I'd like to let the public know that they'll be able to comment during public presentation and also during public comment section of the agenda. They can call 872-3891 or send comments via email. So at this time, we are, have floor open for county resident concerns. Tim, if you see anything, let us know, please. Any, oops.
I have Irene Richardson's on the line, hang on.
And while you pull that up, I inadvertently said the employee is Tim Hart. It was Mike Hart, so my apologies to the family and to the public for that mix-up. Thank you.
Irene, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good morning, Irene.
Good morning, Chairman Welling. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. I can, so go ahead. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner, Chairman Welling and fellow commissioners, my name is Irene Richardson. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Memorial Hospital of Sweetwater County. Thank you so much for giving me a few minutes to talk about some very important things. First, I'd like to thank our county commissioners for their thoughtful leadership and direction for our county and for all of their support and backing of the hospital. I'd like to take a few minutes to talk to everyone about COVID-19. The COVID-19 pandemic has hit Sweetwater County very hard in the last couple of weeks. Dr. Station, our public health officer, shared some numbers with us yesterday, and I'd like to share those numbers with you now about how COVID-19 has impacted our county in the last 19 days. On October 28th, there were 480 positive cases in Sweetwater County. On November 5th, there were 663 positive cases, and by November 16th, there were 1,075 positive COVID cases in Sweetwater County. The rise in cases from October 28th to November 16th, just 19 days later, represents a 124% increase. That's more than double the cases in just 19 days. If we use these numbers to project what could happen in the next several weeks, we could have 1,333 more cases by December 3rd, just 19 days from now, and another 1,652 cases by December 21st, just 19 days from that. That is, if we don't do anything about these numbers and keep doing what we're doing and not make any changes. Prior to October 28th, Sweetwater County had a 5% positivity rate. Since October 28th, the positivity rate was 25%, and since November 5th, the positivity rate is 31%. These are big numbers and big increases. Right now, in the hospital, we have six hospitalized patients, and there have been four deaths in Sweetwater County in the last 12 days. I'd like to take just one minute to give a huge shout-out to all of my staff and all of our physicians. They're amazing. They're working double shifts, they're working overtime, and they're doing whatever they can to make sure that our patients and community are taken care of. I'm so proud of our hospital and our staff and so grateful for them. And to take that a step further, I'd like to also thank all the healthcare workers in Sweetwater County and everywhere for everything that they're doing to keep their patients safe. Back to the numbers. When we look at what has transpired over the last 19 days, if nothing changes, the numbers will keep rising with no end in sight. In the finance world, when we make projections, if nothing changes, we can be relatively certain that our projections will be accurate with relatively little error. That is, if nothing changes. We have the opportunity to change the projection if we do just a couple of things. An ounce of prevention. You've all heard the quote by Benjamin Franklin, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." What does that mean? It means that it's better to take small precautions than to suffer severe consequences later. It means that one small effort now can result in huge results later, kinda like brushing your teeth so you don't get cavities or blowing out your sprinkler system in the fall rather than having it freeze and having to replace it in the spring. A small sacrifice now to prevent a big disaster later. It seems simple enough, and it's probably how we live our lives every day. As we see the COVID numbers increasing, wouldn't it be prudent to do something now to slow this exponential growth in cases that we are seeing? Wouldn't it be wise to make a small sacrifice now to prevent a big disaster later? An ounce of prevention. We know that wearing masks work. It's what healthcare workers have used and continue to use in the hospital where we are treating highly infectious diseases in order to prevent the spread of that disease. We know that practicing proper social distancing works to prevent the spread of viruses. We also know that good hand hygiene works to prevent the spread of viruses. I'm going to ask everyone to please spend that ounce of prevention by wearing a mask and practice social distancing so we don't have to pay that much larger price of what is at stake if we don't. It's a small sacrifice to make. It's worth a shot because if we don't do anything, the numbers will just keep going up just like they have over the last 19 days. The positive cases, the hospitalizations, et cetera, they will just keep increasing. I just ask that you look at the numbers and realize if we had a way to slow this down, wouldn't we at least try? Realistically, the battle isn't whether or not we should wear masks or social distance. The battle is with COVID. It's us against COVID, and we need to come together so that we can battle this together and slow down the spread of COVID. This is real, and it's scary, and it's something you don't want to get. Protect yourself. We don't know how this disease will affect us. It could be anything from mild to severe to worse. There may be some who may disagree, but this is not a time to take it up with each other or debate whether who is wrong or right. Now is the time to take as many precautions as we can so that we could take it up with COVID. I'm just asking everyone to do what we can to bring down the numbers. Please protect yourself by wearing a mask. Please protect your loved ones by asking them to wear masks. Please practice social distancing and avoid large gatherings. I'm just asking that we all please make a small sacrifice now for the greater good in the future. Um, thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you, Irene.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other ones, Tim? No, okay. We'll give it a minute, just in case. Nothing else, Tim? Commissioners, with that, I will close the public comment period and move on with our agenda. Next up is Commissioner Comments Reports. Are we okay? I heard something in background. All right, thank you. We'll move forward with Commissioner Comments Reports, and up first today will be myself. And first of all, I would like to reach out and say thank you to the volunteers that assisted with our elections two weeks ago. And at the same time, also thank our IT support staff. They put in long hours, all of volunteers and IT support and employees to run the elections and make sure that everything was met that was required by state statute and by law. So I'd like to just tell them thank you for their efforts on behalf of the county, myself, and wish them also to continue to be safe. The other thing I'd like to report on is, I sure, like most of you, we've had some pretty busy Zoom events, especially in the last couple of days. And first thing I'd like to touch base on are the Wyoming County Commissioner Association Zooms. Primarily, the Board of Directors were called together, and I forwarded that email to all you to join. I didn't realize that it had a date on Sunday night. That date was wrong. I didn't realize I got into the meeting yesterday and realized when I looked back on it. So I apologize to you, but that should not have been the 15th for that call. It should have been last night. But anyhow, there were two agenda items. One agenda item was the Wyoming Taxpayer Association was interested to know whether WCCA supports a nine-cent increase in the fuel tax. And of course, that's a user tax, and that means, and one of the questions that was asked is, how much of that tax is paid by traveling through Wyoming, not just, you know, over and above Wyoming residents? The figure that was presented to us, about 51% of that tax is paid by out-of-state coming through and that type of thing. So anyhow, there was lively discussion, and of course, the big rush was the Revenue Committee is meeting tomorrow, Thursday and Friday. And the end result was is the Commissioner Association felt that, for the committee, let the committee decide if it comes out of committee and moves forward to the legislature. And we, as a body, when we meet in January for our legislative session, as a body can vote on it as to supporting it strongly or just support it or oppose it in time for the legislative session. So that topic went down in a vote. Also, the other topic that came up was if the WCCA would be willing to sign on a media blitz, supporting a media blitz regarding COVID-19. And we had a long discussion, and the motion and the support for the media blitz passed with two caveats. One is to notify the government that the WCCA does not take a stand on mandatory face coverings. It is only in support of this primary message or this message for media. And the second part of it was that people need to understand that this media blitz is being paid for out of the state level with COVID cares money. No local contributions or contributions out of WCCA. It's just signing on. I will express, based on what I heard Commissioners say yesterday on the public health meetings, when I was listening, I felt very comfortable that we were probably supportive of being part of a media blitz, whether it was local or whatever, because that came out of those meetings yesterday. It's part of public health, so therefore, I felt that after listening to a lot of discussion, I felt comfortable in supporting it. Anyhow, the primary message, let me read it in case somebody hasn't heard it. There's a primary message, a secondary message, and campaign requirements. Primary message coming out of Governor Gordon's office will be, one, COVID levels in Wyoming are critical. Two, masks are essential tools. Three, testing is free, safe, and fast, based on the number of tests coming in. Fast was debated a bunch. Secondary messages, stay home when you are sick, six-foot distancing and gathering indoors. Three, protect the vulnerable. And four, protect our economy. And then, under campaign requirements, harder sale, more urgency on masks to protect vulnerable, to protect the vulnerable and the economy. Two, promote testing, reduce avoidance, education on options. Three, utilize, for now, not forever, is the theme, and keep same basic look and feel. And number four, masks are essential equipment right now, just like your hard hat, which I think supports the industry's feeling on things. So just to share with you with regard to that executive meeting that was called, and we had it last, late yesterday afternoon, that's what came out of it. So I would stop for a moment, stand for any questions regarding the Executive Board meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Johnson?
Getting back to the fuel tax, if I understood you correctly, you said that it went down. What was the reason for it going down? Not that I don't have a position on that. I'm just curious about that.
There were, there were, the reason it went down, there weren't enough, enough board members present, Commissioner Johnson. There were only 18, and it took 16 to pass it. And three did not choose to support it, but 15 did. And hey, one of the group members didn't have time to visit with their other commissioners on the topic, so voted no. So I think if they had time to talk, they would have voted yes. And one of the other voting people, I was really surprised, I won't mention names, but voted that no. But I also know that it might have in reference, because it's come up before. They have a trucking business. So I, I think we're okay. I supported it because I saw it as a user's tax. I saw an opportunity for not to. Anybody who comes through Wyoming or uses our highways needs to help pay for it. Broken down, there would have been about $51 million, I believe, for the state. There would have been about $12 million for counties, and when I talked with Mr. Legursky, that was about three-quarter of a million dollars to us based on the ratio. And of course, for cities, cities, there was about $5 million. We saw the breakdown. So, but anyhow, the, probably the good side of this is, we won't testify this week as WCCA. So that was the big point of it. It's gonna be a tough sale. Any new or additional taxes have been. But if it gets out of revenue to the legislative body, then we, as a entire WCCA Association, will be able to determine what that support or non-support will be at our legislative session, Commissioner Johnson. So I just, just didn't hear exactly why, but yet, I could sense.
Yeah, I think you're probably right about that. And the other question I have is, the indication was that testing is free. I don't think that's exactly right, is it? I think we have to pay for it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, they came out now with that all the testing is free now, from the standpoint of going through your medical hospitals and your clinics and that type of thing. But most of it's all, all free now, Commissioner Johnson. The testing that's done at Memorial and Castle Rock and our healthcare centers, our healthcare providers through, that do provide testing. I believe it's all free now. It's all being paid for by COVID federal government. So if somebody knows something different, I'll stand corrected. But yeah, I think the big question is fast. I question that. It's four to five days, depending on what kind of test. They do have some tests that are very quick and they're pretty accurate, but unfortunately, the supply is dwindling. And they're saving those for emergencies and, and that type of thing, that they have to test somebody and have within an hour, hour and a half, two-hour turnaround. So we are, we are, from our call yesterday, beginning to experience turnaround times because there's so much testing. Also, I think anybody that was on the call that heard yesterday can share that. Also, I think anybody that was on the call that heard yesterday can share that with the testing comes the contact tracing. And contact tracing has changed to the point from our public health position that if you're positive, you will be notified as soon as they get the results, as soon as they can. And then you, as the person that tested positive, is responsible to contact those people you came in contact with. They no longer have the personnel or the time available to do the in-depth contact tracing they were doing, starting in March and April. So some big changes, but it's driven by the increased numbers of positive cases that are showing up, as we are presently experiencing. That was a long answer for you, Commissioner.
It was well done. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Lauren, I think, Commissioner Shanefield, you had one.
I did. I just wanted to get some clarification around the advertising, marketing campaign that WCCA is looking at putting together and what their timeframe was around that.
Okay, let me clear that up. This is a messaging campaign coming out of the governor's office. And they were only asking us if, as an organization, would we support it? So it's coming out of the governor's office, mainly Rennie McKay, who was his advisor, and they're planning a media blitz. There isn't much time to turn around and have a conversation, but that's what that is, Commissioner. So it's not WCCA.
Okay, thank you. Is there a timeframe around that? When are they planning on pushing it out?
I think they'd like to push it out ASAP. And if they can, they would do it today. But I don't think, I think by the end of the week, we'll see something.
Thank you.
So with that, any questions regarding the WCCA executive? And of course, the last thing I have for you as my fellow Commissioners, is we were on some Zoom meetings yesterday, whether it was local public health or state public health. And I think it's a good time, you know, because I know most of you are all on them and that. And I just kind of liked to roundtable your thoughts, what you heard yesterday and that type of thing. So who would like to start out? Roy?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll start. First of all, I would want to thank Dr. Station and Kim and all of them for having the meetings and for everyone attending at the noon. And then also thanks to the Department of Health Director Sabalas and Chamber Director Rick Lee for putting together the afternoon meetings. I think it's an interesting situation we are in. The numbers are increasing. And my concern, as we see the numbers increase, is really about keeping businesses open and not having to look back at a shutdown. And when I look at businesses closing, I don't see businesses possibly having to close because of mandates. I see businesses potentially having to close because of a lack of ability to staff their business. I think last week, at one point, there was a stat that in Sweetwater County School District, number two, there were 52 employees that were on quarantine or tested positive. It makes you wonder how many more employees could actually go down before they could actually operate and have to shut down, whether they want to shut down or not. I think the difficulty with the spreading of the virus is the nuances that it creates and the difficulty of quarantines and also positive tests, the ability for business to stay open, not alone have to shut them down. But it is a polarizing issue. I know, as Commissioners, you guys get called for and against everything, and it's pretty polarized. I think the difficult part about any mask mandate is something that Danny Attorney Aramosi brought up yesterday. And I think the enforcement piece is difficult. And I know in our conversations yesterday, we talked about how sometimes if there is a mandate out there, that will make some people adjust their behavior, no matter what, even if you're not enforcing it. But if people realize you're not enforcing it tough, they're going to eventually slide back and not follow it either. So I think the difficult part in any kind of mandate that, you know, or a concept that comes forward is in the enforcement area. But the one thing I do think is for sure is the numbers have increased, no matter how, what side of the aisle you sit on in this argument. And we have a responsibility to figure out how that is, and that may not be a mask mandate. I think we need to look at a higher level of education, and I've been talking to Kim about that a little bit at Public Health, which is, Doc talked about it, contact tracing. They have 17 extra employees right now, and they're overtaxed, and they can't keep up. I mean, that tells you where we're at. We have to figure out how we, as a combined group, and I think in a logical way, I think, you know, we got to figure out how to do that. And that's a difficult task. And I think it starts with education and communication and buy-in and moving from that direction. So that's kind of where I'm at, Doc. I do appreciate the time. I thought there was great conversation yesterday and great partners. But I think that communication needs to almost happen regularly at this point until we get it figured out.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Shanefield.
So I feel that this marketing campaign coming from the governor's office ties directly into what, and this is partially coming from Southwest Wyoming Industry Group, which Simplot is a part of. And I've kind of attended both from a Commissioner standpoint and also from Simplot's standpoint. But I feel like we need to do, and we should have been doing, a better job of educating the public all along. I believe that the governor's office pushing something out at this time is going to be critical. And I also know that there's support from a very large number of our industry partners who, just like Commissioner Lloyd just stated, are very concerned about keeping their businesses open. I know Simplot has struggled in some areas, sometimes up to 25% to 50% of different areas, you know, testing positive or being quarantined because of close contact. And so that's a huge concern for these large industries that are bringing in millions of dollars to our community and employing the majority of the people that work in our community. So there was definitely conversation around a mask mandate, and Dr. Station has put in for a mask mandate request through the state of Wyoming. It's pending approval right now. So I haven't actually seen the paperwork around that. And there was some very interesting conversation around how that would be enforced, if it was enforceable. Commissioner Lloyd covered that very well. There was also some conversation, as you stated, Doc, that the testing, our tests are dwindling locally, even for pre-procedure tests. They said that they didn't even have a full day on hand. They had them back ordered. But that's very concerning that our healthcare system is being taxed in this way. And the fact that public health is struggling to keep up with the positives. I have somebody that tested positive on Friday that I know, and she still hasn't heard back from, or she still hasn't heard from public health. And so that just shows right there how busy they are. And just to follow up on Commissioner Johnson's question about the testing being free, there actually is also testing from the state of Wyoming. It's through Vault Health. And you can order it to be shipped to your house. It is free. They send it next day, and you are able to do that witness over Zoom. So they, you don't have to have any contact. You don't have to leave your house. It's free. The state of Wyoming then emails you, or the company emails you your results, and then also sends those to the public health office. So that's something that I know some of our industry partners are using for their employees as well, to ensure that there is testing available. I think that's everything that I have on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanefield. Any other Commissioner who want to comment based on the calls yesterday? Mr. Smith?
I don't know that I can add too much more. I do appreciate the time, you know, having great leadership out there that's trying really hard to look for answers. And I really appreciate that they're reaching out to anybody and everybody to look for answers to these questions that we really don't have answers to. It's wonderful to hear collaboration and talking. And on the afternoon call with Director Sabayos, I think that that call generally echoed my feeling of mandating is just going to be so difficult. And I don't know that there are people out there who haven't made up their mind already about wearing a mask or not. And if it becomes a mandate, is that going to change anybody's mind? Or is that just going to overload our court system and put a burden of enforcing that on who? Business owners, sheriff, you know, who do we have do that? So that's really difficult. But I do totally believe in the education and let's pull together. That's really the most important thing, I think, is let's do this for the good of each other. And like Irene said, that was awesome. It's us against COVID. It's not us against us. Wear a mask, don't wear a mask. It's us against COVID. And I love that. So let's band together, let's come together and just do what's best for each other. And these numbers are scary with Thanksgiving next week and the gatherings that I hear about. And, oh, we're going to be okay. It's just, it's just going to be the eight or 10 of us at our house. And that's exactly the kind of place that it happens in my business. Obviously, we're very concerned. We haven't had any residents at all ill. And we want to keep it that way. But I just, I don't know how, I felt like we had a great wall around us to kind of, over time, when this first started, we built up this wall and had these great procedures and everything in place. My wall now feels like it's cracking and crumbling. I'm waiting for it to just come crashing down any day and be disastrous. I think that we all know people who have tested positive. We know people who've passed away. And this is real. So it's just a matter of what do we want to do? How much responsibility do we want to take as citizens of our city, our county, our state to try to combat this? And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Any other comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Johnson?
I think you've all covered that very, very well. But what I'd just like to say is to thank all of the healthcare workers in the county and the state here. You're doing an outstanding job for the people of Sweetwater County. And we, you don't go unnoticed, even though we may not say it, we appreciate you very much and want to thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. I can only echo all of your thoughts and that type of thing. The thing that I really watch closely, more so than, you know, I think we're doing everything we can to support our businesses. I do want to continue as a group for us to remember when we go, think about those health cares, watch closely so we don't overburden our hospital and make sure we're doing things to help them so they can battle. Also, another responsibility we have is our employees in the county. And sometimes we have to do things to protect them that they don't want to do to protect themselves. And I think by us following good precautions, we can do that and protect them, and not only the people that are coming into the buildings and stuff like that, that goes on. But anyhow, I just want to tell everybody, as well as the health workers, thank you for what they've done, as Commissioner Johnson said, and as all of you, as other Commissioners commented, we still have a big road ahead of us and that type of thing. So with that, one more time, I apologize to Mike Hart, that I said Tim Hart instead of Mike Hart, and to his families. And they are in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. With that, that concludes my report, and we'll move on to Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to tag on that, I want to say thank you to Irene and all those at Memorial Hospital of Sweetwater County who are working so hard, the staff there, the testing that they're doing, Kim Lambert at Public Health and all those who were working with her. You know, she was nearly in tears yesterday, just talking about how overwhelmed they are. Bailey Doctor over Castle Rock and all of them that are doing their best as well. And so many others that are in private practice or on the front lines that are working, and really do appreciate them and all of the work that they're doing. It's not easy. It is not easy. And, you know, we see it every day. So be kind to each other, be kind to yourself, and do your best to be a good neighbor and a good friend here in our county. Aside from COVID, at the airport, we had a board meeting last week, and YDOT has suspended their payments of grants until at least January of 2021, which is unfortunate because that was a portion of the money which was going to go towards the pre and the design aspects, the pre-construction aspects of the terminal construction. Devin is working, though, with those vendors to work out a system. So he hasn't asked for any other money from us or anything or the city yet. So he's hopeful that he'll be able to continue to carry on with the work that needs to be done and until we get the payments in January. And then the hospital, just again, kudos and thanks to them for all that they're doing. Those are my two large liaison assignments. So I do appreciate them and all that they're doing. So that's really my report. Thank you.
All right. Question, thank you, Commissioner Smith. Any questions for Commissioner Smith? With no questions, we'll move on. Commissioner Shanefield?
Yes. So SEDC is going to be hosting a blockchain and Bitcoin 101 training. And that's going to be on November 19th, from 2:30 to 4:30. Registration is still open on that, and it is going to be a virtual training. They also will be launching a virtual business education series in December in partnership with the college, WWCC. And they are going to be hosting a legislative meet and greet discussion with industry leaders and Sweetwater County legislators on December 16th at 9:30 a.m. So discussion with that is going to be around legislation that could impact economic development and industry, as well as some discussion on some proposed bills from around the state. The Industrial Development Project Phase Three is nearing completion in the coming weeks. SEDC will meet Wednesday, so tomorrow, to discuss next steps and hear updated information from WH Smith and Associates and Thomas P. Miller and Associates, which is the groups that are working on that project. And then SEDC has also just recently received a donation of $1,000 from Rocky Mountain Power to decorate a Christmas tree for the upcoming YWCA Festival of Trees. So we're going to have a peppermint themed tree for the festival this year. So a big thanks to Rocky Mountain Power for the sponsorship of that. And the event is going to be held at Commerce Bank of Wyoming, November 23rd through December 3rd. And I know they're doing things differently this year due to COVID, and they're ensuring social distancing and have extended the event a little bit longer. For grants, Christina's out of the office for a few days, but she's been working really hard to get recent cares funding requests that everybody sees on the agenda. I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to it. The museum had an employee who had been exposed to another employee who tested positive for COVID. So they have taken the proper precautions and are closed until the test results come back. They're still doing everything online and pushing information out through Facebook. And they actually have a meeting coming up this Thursday. And then I had a NACO broadband task force meeting yesterday morning. There was a brief overview and introduction of all the members, so not a lot of action, discussion or any of that. But I'm really looking forward to being a part of that task force and looking at the things that we can do to improve the connectivity throughout our state. I also want to echo my fellow Commissioners' comments on thanking our healthcare workers, our first responders, all of those folks that are dealing with increased stress and increased burden and trying to keep up with everything in relation to COVID and everything that they're doing. So thank you for your hard work and your dedication. We do truly appreciate you. And that is all.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanefield. Questions for Commissioner Shanefield? Thank you. And next up, Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Wendling. I just want to start by congratulating the candidates who move forward in the election and all those that put their name in it in the primary or the general. It is quite an honor and quite a duty to, just a sacrifice to put your name out there and be willing to do and serve others. So I want to congratulate those that won, but also thank those that worked hard, that were, put their name into the hat. That's an accommodation in its own right. Also want to thank, reiterate what Doc said, and thanking the poll workers, but also the Elections Office and Tim and his crew. I came up that night just to see if I could say hello and support. And downstairs was an incredibly sparse crowd compared to usual. But Cindy and her crew did a great job throughout the evening. Tim, Brandon, all those guys, they did a great job. John DeLeon was here helping. And so just want to thank all those guys for their efforts in making the elections happen. As far as liaison work goes, library moving forward, Jason kind of uses the term, they're maintaining, they're moving forward. It's hard to really build and do new events and new situations in the current. they're maintaining, they're moving forward. It's hard to really build and do new events and new situations in the current thing we're doing. But they're that they've created a grab and go program where people can come in and grab activity packets and take it out and do it at home, and that's been a huge success. So I think that's um some good stuff going on at the library. Starbus, um, starting yesterday, um had made the decision to go back to a um a door-to-door system instead of a fixed route system to protect the consumers with no more than five people on the bus. Um there were a couple of situations that started to occur in which sick people were getting on the bus and it was hard to control from that situation. And so uh they have gone back to that. I want to commend that board for being very proactive and um also um the new director, Mary Seppi, for being very um diligent and making decisions and working with um public health and Kim and that group as they do that. Um, as I mentioned, Kim, I've already given them a lot of kudos and I know I made comments in my comments, I know Doc did about them not being able to contact trace and having to do different things. Want to reiterate, that has nothing to do with their abilities. It's about just the overwhelm. They are working diligently up there and some of that stuff that's difficult to happen now isn't because of a lack of effort, it's because of the numbers. So what I want to make sure that's there. Events complex. We were set to meet tonight, but that meeting has been canceled at this point. Um and I have reached out to Larry and Candy to see if there's anything I could do to support or help them. Um, juvenile justice, I met with Karen last week and um also Michael Love. Um, a lady at a public radio was doing an interview, um, doing a um program on juvenile justice and since we have a unique situation here, um we're going to uh move forward. Um, she's going to do an interview. She asked to meet with me because as the liaison at Southwest Counseling and um and uh juvenile probation. I asked Karen in Southwest Counseling to sit in with me because I'm still new at this and I don't think I would have been the right expert to share a lot of information. Um, but I do appreciate the work they're doing. Um, and then the only other things um I want to end off in a positive note, want to congratulate the Green River um state, um um, the Green River State uh Girls Swim Team for winning a state championship in three A, first time in like forty-five years that they've won that title. They had multiple um state champions, including Haley Ureg and um Lauren Jensen on the four A, and then the their relay team um also was the state champion. Abby Kim Robinson from Rock Springs won a state championship and she deserves some kudos. And last but not least, um, our friends from Farsen for the second time in uh three years, the Pronghorns. Go Pronghorns. If you've never watched six-man football, it is probably the greatest thing in the entire. It's like squirrels on ice skates, man. People are going all over, fast, crazy. Um, nothing to score forty-two points in a quarter. I mean, it's insane. So uh big congratulations to the Pronghorns and um a great season in their second championship and and um I wasn't able to go to the game, but listening to the radio broadcast, even though it was limited to the stadium, around that stadium, the view and picture I got from Al was um during the game um was just three to four deep in vehicles around that stadium, watching that game, supporting that community and that it's just gives me goosebumps thinking of. So awesome. And then I will just say, um, just be honest, at our break, I'm going to leave the Commission Office and go home. Um, just because um um I think I need to um move away from the office uh due to potential risks that they have occurred that I didn't really realize were there. So we're going to be moving. Um, I am secluded here, but I am going to be taking the rest of this meeting from home. So um, speaking of COVID, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Questions for Commissioner Lloyd? Okay. Commissioner Johnson, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I have the Public Works Department report. For the buildings, the Commissioners' room remodel is moving along with almost all of demolition completed. Bonds will be in early next week to configure the bathroom trunk line venting. ECI will start replacing lights after the ceiling grid is installed next week. All of the floor tile that was damaged by the roof leak has been removed uh in the clerk's office, clerk of court's office, and the carpet will be installed at the end of the week. In engineering, we are currently working on the RFPs for the detention center grinder pump project and the purchasing department foundation and purchasing department's foundation project for repair, for for potential repairs. Road and Bridge, we canceled our motor grader operator training for this week due to COVID nineteen concerns. We will try and reschedule it for a later date. Crews are continuing to work on culvers, traffic sign, traffic signage and delineators. So that's the Public Works Department report. Uh, next, uh, since the election, I've been um getting a lot of complaints about poll issues, uh, as I'm sure the clerk of court, uh, the clerks uh been receiving also uh that issues could seem to be centered around locations and and staffing. But I I'd say to the people, uh, one one comment I've heard, I've been doing this for many, many years as this poll worker and I'll never do it again. Uh I I'd like to reach out to all those people that did work at the polls. You got to remember who you were working for. It's the public that are trying to vote. It's in spite of uh the county might not have handled it quite right. Uh, don't let that bother you. I think you need to come back and continue to do the the work that you have done. It means a lot to the county and the people that you serve. And I I just ask you to uh overlook the problems that I'm talking about, poll workers overlook the problems that occurred and come back the next election and give it your best shot. We appreciate it very much. The people of Sweetwater County appreciate you, even though there were problems at the polls. And with that, uh, I I have had COVID comments also, but I think those have been adequately covered, so I don't have anything else to say about that. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, and I echo your same thoughts for our our uh poll workers. We need them. Elections run smooth when uh they're there to help. Uh, it's not always the best uh job in the world. That kind of reminds me of education. But at the same token, uh, we appreciate them very much. Uh, thank you for your report. Any questions for Commissioner Johnson? Okay, with that, Commissioners, we'll move on to our agenda action presentation items. Uh, up first is uh tab C. Before we get going, uh, I'd like to plan a break around ten o'clock, Commissioners. Uh, near or near ten, take a short break and uh and that, but we'll watch it closely. So uh, first up is tab C, which is approval of resolution two zero dash one one dash GR dash zero three, for submission of a coronavirus relief grant application for Sweetwater County. And presenting that, I believe, is Mr. Legursky. Um, I don't believe Christine is on this morning, so with that, uh, Gene, the floor is yours.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will stumble through this since Christina's not here and I won't do nearly as good of a job. But um what you have before you in this package is uh some more coronavirus relief grants. Um, most of it is payroll in the um for the Sheriff's Office. Uh, we also did buy two uh electrostatic sprayers to use in different in Rock Springs and Green River that actually help with applications of different products, so we don't have to wipe down with so much chlorine. It's starting to damage some of the fixtures and stuff like that. Um, laptops and the technology signature. So what we're looking for is approval from you guys and uh allowing the Chairman to sign the resolution number twenty dash eleven dash GR dash oh three. And all documentation.
Thank you, Gene. Uh, Commissioners, any question for Mr. Legursky?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Field.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to add to the presentation. I did talk to Christina a little bit about it before um she left the office. And so um there's a four million dollars um that's in there that's kind of a catch-all. At this point, we are unsure if the state is going to approve that or not. Um, so the federal government had put in um to place for allowance of um the hazard pay and the additional funds for that um for the Sheriff's Department. However, the State of Wyoming um SLIB Board has not allowed for it in the past. Um, we are hopeful that they are going to change their minds and follow the federal guidance that has come down. Um, and if the state does accept that, then that four million dollars will be a a big thing, obviously, for um our community. Um, but at this point in time, um, it's it is a catch-all and we we haven't been awarded that money yet and it may not come. So she just wanted to make sure that we knew. Um, but we are putting in, she did put in for everything possible that we could get covered. Um, just to be sure that we didn't leave anything uncovered.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions for Mr. Legursky or Commissioner Shane Field, as she did visit with Christina? Commissioners, as I read, continue to read through that and having previewed it, if there's no questions, what I I see a phone. Is that part of this, Tim? Tim, I see a phone on.
I don't know who that is.
Would you please mute him, please? Thank you, Tim. All right, going back to the agenda item, Commissioners, uh, if there's no questions, what's your pleasure regarding resolution number two zero dash one one dash GR dash zero three?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I would uh move to approve and authorize the Chairman to sign resolution number twenty dash eleven dash GR dash oh three and all required documentation for the submission of a coronavirus relief grant application for Sweetwater County.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Shane Field. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, Mr. Legursky. The only comment I'll make is uh you have to put a feather in your hat that this is one of the times that uh you have been able to bring uh money into the uh county. Um, but we got to give credit to Christina too, okay?
I I won't take credit for it.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on, we have tab D, which is acceptance of the Jaspersen drainage easement and with us for that item again is Mr. Legursky, our Public Works Director. Gene, the floor is yours.
Um, so what this is, is uh over the last four years, I've been working with John and Stephanie Jaspersen out in Jamestown. And on the end of Wilson Street, Wilson Street just dead ends and then dives off into their property. So all the drainage from Wilson Street and partially of Fourth Street um drains onto their property. And sometimes it washes out the front yard. It's it's just kind of a mess over there. So over the last couple of years, we kind of came to a an agreement on them uh giving us an easement um across their property so that we can properly um channel the drainage that comes off of the county roads in that area across theirs to the green where it belongs. It eventually gets there anyway. Uh, but this will allow us to be able to maintain a small ditch and do some other stuff to uh protect their land.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Legursky, Commissioners?
And Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
Gene, would you just cover, uh, I I've talked to you about it, but I think the Michael Commissioners and you need to hear. What what's the cost of this to the county, et cetera?
Um, basically ten bucks for the easement and then we did have to pay for the surveying and everything like that. It was about fifteen hundred dollars. And then we have to build it. We'll build it with county crews.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Thank you, Gene. Other questions for Mr. Legursky, Commissioners? With that, Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding the easement from John and Stephanie Jaspersen?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Smith.
I'm with we accept the drainage easement from John and Stephanie uh Jaspersen and authorize the Chairman to sign? No?
They'll just give it to us and I'll file it, but we need to have it on record that you guys accepted it.
Okay, well, let's accept it. That's my motion.
I have a motion to accept the easement. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Uh, any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Legursky. Um, let's go on. I think you're still up for the award of the fiscal year twenty crack ceiling project. Uh, Gene?
This is just part of our maintenance program. Uh, we haven't done a crack ceiling program in about six years in the county. And that's one of those things about every five to seven years, you should be crack ceiling uh roads to push off other maintenance items. Crack ceiling prevents water from penetrating into um not only the asphalt surface, but also the base in the subgrade surface and causing potholes and other various things. And um we put this out. It's basically all the mine roads and Yellowstone and Blairtown um that we're going to tackle um underneath this crack ceiling project.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Legursky?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, uh, in recognition of my former co-commissioner, John Colbe. I'd like to commend the engineer's estimate. It's pretty darn close this time, so I appreciate that, Gene.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other questions for Mr. Legursky? Uh, Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding this bid?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
I make the uh motion to award the bid for the fiscal year twenty crack ceiling project to R and D Sweeping and Asphalt Maintenance LLC in the sum of seventy thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and authorize the Chairman to sign all necessary project documents.
Hey, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Shane Field. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Let's move on. Tab F with Mr. Legursky. The North Sweetwater and Water, Sweetwater Water and Sewer District Type A licenses. Mr. Legursky, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, um, what we're asking for here is there's approximately eighteen different licenses. Um, road crossing, road board licenses that the uh North Sweetwater Water and Sewer District has to get. They are currently um in the DEQ process of getting their plans approved um to redo the sewer lines in and around uh the upper cap of Reliance and also um the ponds out there. And a lot of that, as you know, are in county-owned alleys, county-owned streets um and also coming down Reliance Road. So um instead of boring you guys with all eighteen licenses, I just included the plans and would like your permission to um approve those once all the license application um requirements have been met.
Thank you, Mr. Legursky. Commissioners, uh, as you review the plans and that, uh, any questions for Mr. Legursky?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
Gene, I I think, are you asking that you'd author, you'd be authorized to sign the documents as they're required so that they don't have to come back to us?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other questions? With no further questioning, Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding this request to allow the Public Works Director the authority to approve all licenses for the North Sweetwater Water and Sewer District once all license requirements have been met?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I would like to make a motion to allow the Public Works Director the authority to approve all licenses for the North Sweetwater Water and Sewer District once all licenses have been met. So kind of a ditto, but yes, that's my motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Okay, um, wow, we're really ahead, half hour ahead. I know the sheriff is on. Sure, let's go ahead and do the sheriffs and then see where we're at and maybe we can take a break or whatever, whatever you want to do. So Sheriff, uh, next item on our agenda is to, is Gary out there? He's part of this, uh.
Yeah, I'm in the other room. I think he's on the phone.
Okay, let's, uh, Sheriff, do you want to wait for Mr. McLean?
That's fine.
Okay, let's just uh put a pause for a moment, wait for Mr. McLean. Uh, better yet, let's take uh, let's take a quick five minutes, Commissioners. and be back here in five minutes. And hopefully Mr. McLean will be ready to go. We're still planning for a, about a 10 o'clock break. Thank you. Quick five.
To request to restaff vacant position in the sheriff's office. With us is Mr. McLean and Sheriff Grossnickel. Mr. McLean, for yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. Before he is the request to restaff a vacant position in the sheriff's office, this position is a control room position in the detention. As most of you are aware, the way that facility works is accessible for officers and others. In and out of the facility is controlled by a central control person. Those positions also perform another number of other functions. This particular individual moved back to be closer with their family. And as such, there's a vacancy. As you will recall, at the last meeting, we discussed as part of the voluntary separation plan, the sheriff eliminating two positions. This position, as most of the positions in the detention facility, are minimum staffing positions, meaning you need a certain number of people to meet the minimum thresholds of safety and recommendations within the facility. And so I'd recommend that the board consider replacing this position and the cost summary is provided in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Sheriff Grossnickel, anything else to add?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, again, I just want to reiterate that we are attempting to run our organization as efficiently as possible and this is a needed position. We wouldn't be coming before you if we didn't realize that it was a position that is absolutely needed for those numbers. So we appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioners, any questions for either Mr. McLean or HR Director or Sheriff Grossnickel?
Yes, Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
Just to comment for the sheriff, I think consistently since he's been the sheriff, he's been asked to do more with less and I think his letter of the ninth is extremely well written and I surely think we should honor this request.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Any other questions, comments, commissioners for Mr. McLean or Sheriff Grossnickel? No more questions. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
I make a motion that we honor the request to restaff a vacant position in the sheriff's office as presented to us.
We have a motion to approve the position as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion, commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I need to hear another one or two.
I got an eye out there, but that could be my second eye, but I'll make sure.
Okay, I'll take it because that's one that was one of them I was looking for. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve as well as it's been. In favor, all those not in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Sorry about that. I threw myself for a loop. Motion carries. With that, Sheriff, thank you and please pass along to your people in your department, the work that's appreciated and tell them to hang in there.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we thank you and I will do that.
Thank you. Moving on, Gary, we'll do Tab H, which is DocuSign and then I think we'll take a break. We should be pretty close to 10 o'clock. So with that, we'll move on to Tab H, which is a DocuSign agreement. And to present that is Mr. McLean. This is kind of a spinoff from our last meeting. So, Mr. McLean, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. I'm gonna this should have this in your packet. This is the DocuSign agreement. It's a DocuSign actually information packet that talks about all of the function and functionality and features of DocuSign. As we discussed briefly last meeting, DocuSign is kind of the industry standard for electronic document authorization. And as we have downsized and continue to downsize employees, combined with dealing with the COVID pandemic, it's become important throughout the county functions that there be an ability for individuals to sign and authorize documents, especially the board, but many others also, without being physically in that location to do that. Some of you have probably signed documents using documents signed received from other agencies, especially in the federal government arena and some at the state. In the the real challenge, I think, in in looking at this software, there are kind of three main uses. The the primary uses in areas like contracts and agreements. You basically can take an agreement that exists. Let's say it's a contract. Identify the area where the signatures would be and then send those signatures to the people. And then there's an electronic authorization process. It keeps those in a log. The software tracks them if there's any need to go back and verify authorization. One of the things that we had to wrestle with, there's a couple of different versions of this. A pro version and a enterprise pro version, business pro and enterprise pro, which you see here. There are, especially for the board and high individuals that sign and authorize documents regularly. The enterprise pro has the ability with some nice features with centralized login and and single sign-on, meaning you don't have to log in each time you do a transaction. It also allows you to use an app on your phone. So for example, today you have maybe a dozen or so items on the agenda that you'll need to sign. Those documents, when you open that app, would be listed there. You could go through them one by one on your phone or on your laptop or a desktop computer and and sign those documents and it maintains a record of when you signed, who signed, what day. The the probably the unique part of of DocuSign is the way in which the pricing is arranged. They treat it kind of like the post office from the standpoint that pricing is based on on the number of envelopes. So for example, if we have an agreement with, say, the city of Green River and we send that agreement out, that's one envelope. If I decide to send out to each employee a signature saying, have you received your policy manual? That would be, you know, 246 envelopes. So coming up with the number that we'd actually use is is a little bit difficult, given that we don't have experience with this. But the the overall view is, is that it's easier to add more capacity if you pay for too much upfront and then don't use it, you kind of lose it. So our position, it'd be to start low and then renew the contract at reasonably low and then renew it at a higher level if it looked like there was a need for additional capacity. The price per envelope obviously goes down as the volume that you sign up in your subscription goes up. And so trying to find some frames of reference, you know, we looked at some things like how many how many vouchers are are out there. So we do about 4,000 vouchers a year. And, you know, I'm sure some of those we could we could handle this way. The you know, board generally has between 10 and 20 agreements and and other things that they sign per per board meeting. So there's, you say, four or 500 of those. And it's difficult to see in in each department how much that would be. But again, I think the minimum level starts at 2,000. I'll show you the I'll show you the cost agreement or the pricing agreement that we were able to get following last meeting. We discussed with the bear with me here, discussed with the DocuSign. How many? A little bit better pricing, if they could give us better pricing. And they came up with a a little bit better proposal. And for 2,000 envelopes, the this is the pricing proposal that we received from DocuSign. So you see for the quantity 2,000, it's 10,750. The support costs and then the initial startup of 400, which is about, I don't know, quite 3,000 less than it was at last meeting. So in talking with Tim, and he this seems like a value added resource to the county as a whole. We believe that this is eligible for COVID reimbursement. And that the 2,000 signature allowance for where we're at this year seems to be appropriate. And then try to look at maybe if we need to increase it as we get more experience and how much volume we're we're using. So from the NHR perspective, we will, we have documents signing right now within some of our software. So I don't anticipate for employee purposes, having a huge need for this. But for the other departments and especially for the board and when members can't show up or members can't show up or we need to have emergency approval, I think it'd be an invaluable tool. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Gary. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. McLean?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
I have a question around the line in his letter that says this item should be reimbursable through COVID funding. Is this the COVID funding that we just request for that we don't have anything back on?
Maybe Tim can answer that better. I think Tim submitted that with the IT stuff. Tim, can you address that?
Yes, I believe that Christina did put it in this round of requests that just got approved this morning. So I'm hoping that it sounds like it should work, but we'll.
So if that funding is not approved, since we don't know yet and it hasn't even been submitted in full, how do you plan on paying for this?
Yeah, so if, I think there's two things. I think one, Tim, Tim had talked about it pending purchasing in through his budget. We'll obviously hear back shortly on the COVID request funding. And we certainly could wait until that funding comes back and is approved before we make any final purchase decisions.
Thank you, Gary. Anything else, Commissioner Shanefield? Other commissioners, comments, question, or no more comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I've used DocuSign extensively and enjoyed a great product and everything. I will say that having submitted some similar requests to the slipboard, they are willing to pay for this, but generally only till the end of the year. So we may get like the setup and and a month's worth or something like that. But that that was my experience anyways. They prorated my requests out and said, we won't pay any anything beyond December of this year. So we'll see how that works out, I guess. But yeah, great product and I think we definitely need it however we can get it.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Other questions, commissioners?
Yeah, I have a question. And I actually, this is going to be a question for Jeff because he's used the product and I haven't. And it sounds like he's probably the most one that's used it the most. I'm with the product, you know, knowing that even if they did cover the full 12, knowing this would be a recurring cost, you think, you know, knowing what we have to do and what we have to use it for, would it be worth that cost with our upstairs, with our with what we're facing at in the next couple of budget years, Jeff?
I think so. It's, you know, my use has been, my head office is in Denver and we're here in Rock Springs. And so obviously traveling back and forth to Denver, sending things back and forth to Denver is no no easy task. So for us, it's been, it's been essential to have, I guess. It may be a little more convenience for us here in the county, but I also think that it's it'll it'll save a lot of time and effort on on many people's parts. So yeah, I do think it's worthwhile.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Other questions?
One more question, Mr. Chairman, and this will be for Gary. So Gary, let's say we did do this and and Gary or Tim, we did do this. And after a year, you know, when we had a re-up and and we looked at the budget and we said, man, the budget's rough and man, we just didn't get the bang for buck. It was more of a convenience. It wasn't as needed as we thought. Could we not, we wouldn't be required to move on for the next year's contract, would we?
No, absolutely not, Commissioner Lloyd. These are all just subscription services. You pay for 2,000 or 4,000 envelopes. And at the end of that period, we have to renew and we come back to the board as we are now and and have that discussion. We probably would also have that discussion, you know, during the budget stuff and also if we can think this worked. I think from a staff perspective and and Jeff, Commissioner Smith alluded to this a little bit, is that as we reduce staff numbers and we've got 11 early retirements there, things that create a lot of administrative time are things like sending documents around, chasing people down to get them signed, about getting vouchers signed by people. So you know, hopefully we can find a way to measure the savings that result from this. But I think we're going to have to continue to look at technology because we're at a point, I don't think that cutting many more positions is going to be possible unless we can get savings through the application of technology. So it's kind of like an investment to create some savings. And that's kind of how we look at this. Can we function without it? The answer is yes. Is are these types of tools, the things that will allow the organization to function more efficiently? Yes. How much? It's hard to say because we've never used this on an organizational basis. In fact, we've hardly used it at all. I I use some within the software that I have, but but that's it. But I think countywide, when you think of of the entities like the county attorney's office, the county commissioners, public works, grants, the amount and volume that the county clerk does on behalf of the board and the county agreements with the component units, MOUs will be doing facility use agreements with the component units in the near future. It seems to me that there's a lot of opportunity for us to achieve small savings in a multitude of areas. So I I think it's worth giving a shot and circle back and see if it makes sense when the renewal's up.
Thank you, Gary. Other questions? With that, commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding the DocuSign agreement?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
I would like to make a motion to approve the DocuSign agreement. I think it's going to be a great tool for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanefield.
Chairman to sign any related documents.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and authorize Chairman to sign the DocuSign agreement. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, commissioners? No further discussion and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
As needed.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So we will have moved forward with that one. At this point in time, I would like to take a break. And that break will hopefully only be about 15 minutes or so. I will specifically look, Tim, for Commissioner Lloyd and Commissioner Shanefield to reappear before we continue our meeting. So at this time, we'll take a break and come back to order when those two commissioners are aboard. Thank you.
Lauren, if you're on, will you let us know?
Roy, I hate to say this, but you don't look any better in that position as you did in the old one. I can't hear you.
I said, and that was even with a new haircut to shave, like I don't have much hope.
Tim, can you tell if-
My boys look like me, and I say, man, I pray for them every day.
Tim, can you tell me if Lauren's on or not?
Lauren is connected, but she's not responding, but I see her on.
Oh, there she is. Okay. All righty, let me take a quick look. Sally's ready. Cindy's on. Everybody's here. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call this meeting back to order and to continue with our agenda. Next up is Tab I, which is the health insurance premiums fiscal year 2021. So Mr. McLean with HR. The floor is yours, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. As you recall, we had a brief discussion the last meeting regarding health insurance premiums. This week, we'll start open enrollment, which, you know, for the new plan year, which begins January 1st. As part of that, it's essential that we have fixed the premiums for the next 12 months, January to January. And as part of that process of developing premiums, we have to make some decisions regarding some things that will help us contain costs, and that's going to really be our focus for today. I have with me Brian Carter from Diversified, as he helped gather some of the information, especially the stop-loss information, and helped develop some of the recommendations for cost containment under our plan. As we discussed last meeting, and indeed, as we've discussed throughout the year, the county has been challenged from a healthcare perspective in two primary areas. First is with large claims. Large claims are generally those claims above $70,000. But more specifically, our stop-loss limit is at $175,000, and we will have claims in excess of that 175 or up to 175. Our plan pays 100% of the cost above 175. The stop-loss carrier pays. Historically, meaning if we go back four or five years ago, we had a small number of claims that reached that stop-loss threshold, like four or five. Today, we're more like 14, 15, 16, and the magnitude of those claims are much higher. We're seeing claims in the 4, 5, 6, 7, $800,000 range, and we expect those to go in excess of a million in years, in the years to come. So we have a considerably higher number of large claims. The second part of that is on the pharmacy side, and we've discussed this, you read about it in the newspaper. But there are a lot of new pharmaceutical products, many do a great job, that are just ungodly expensive. They are, we had this year, our first claim that was in the $400,000 range, just on pharmacy. We exceeded the stop-loss limit just on pharmacy, no medical. We expect that trend to continue until there's some legislative action to control prices. As you know, for most of these new drugs, there's no market forces, there's no competitors for many of the products, and they'll, they can charge any price that they want. And so what I had challenged Diversified with Brian and his group was to see what options we could get on the table, especially given the county's financial challenges over the next few years, so that we could maintain the highest level of benefit program that we have. We have a very rich plan, and yet, do whatever we could to try to control costs, the growth of costs, if nothing else. So last week, and again, in this packet, I provided you with some rate sheets, and the difference between those rate sheets are based upon the implementation of different cost containment measures. And so we're going to talk about those briefly, but those cost containment measures are primarily in, in, in three areas. And, and those areas are a spousal HRA plan using a group called Accolade, which we'll discuss a little bit more to help employees navigate claims, especially large claims. And then the third thing is to take some action to curtail the spiraling pharmaceutical costs. And so that's really the focus of the, the recommended rate sheets or combinations of those things. With, without doing anything, we're looking at a seven-plus percent rate increase. And I don't know if Brian has any newer information from the stop-loss providers, but he could share that with us, but that amount is, is in excess of $600,000 increase in terms of health insurance premiums. And those will obviously prove challenging for us during the budget. We budgeted 8%, so we'd be looking at slightly less than that in our current budget. But obviously, going fourth in July, we would have to address those potential increases. I went through the same presentation as did, I don't know if Brian was there, but Chris was there with the component units. And we discussed all of the various options, and as we go through there, I'll discuss some of the feedback that we received on those. So Brian, if you wouldn't mind talking about those three options a little bit, since you assembled them, and they're a little more conversant than I am. I think that'll help the board understand where the thought process is.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Would you please introduce who else might be here with you besides Brian?
Sure, thank you. Brian Carter, that's here, is with Diversified, one of the health insurance consultants. Chris Merrill works with Brian and did the presentation for the component units last week. Natalie Ringwall, who's being shy and not having your picture on today, also works with Diversified, and we've worked with them for, for some time. So those three are with us today, and, and they've been a great help in trying to navigate these waters.
I'd like to, Gary, I'd like to thank the three of them for being here and appreciate them taking the time to work with you as this is presented. So I'll turn the floor back over to you, Gary, and you can turn it over to whomever.
Thanks. Brian, should we run through some of those options, so we can talk about the specifics, and then we'll talk about our recommendations?
Absolutely. So thank you all for your time. So as we've talked about numbers, Gary's hit those three points where, you know, the, we really need to find a way to address those three areas. As we talk about large claimants and the way large claimants have gone, you know, we continue to see more and more growth there. I mean, that's specifically for an update on, on stop-loss, which has been- which has been a huge challenge this year, as we continue to have really large cancer claims and other large claims. On the stop-loss carrier, that's where they get involved, right? When these individual claimants exceed $175,000, that's when the stop-loss kicks in. And right now, your current stop-loss carrier, they're asking for a 44% increase in premiums, but they also have six exclusions, or what they refer to as lasers. And a laser is when they give a different deductible for an individual. And the reason they do that is that they're saying, okay, we're rating on prospective risk. We've got this upcoming risk that we don't know about from individuals that may get sick in the upcoming year, and that's what they're trying to insure against. But they've got a whole list of folks that have ongoing treatment, that they already know, next year, they've got this much in spend, and so they're putting a different deductible level on those individuals. So the stop-loss has been a big challenge. And so the three programs that we proposed are trying to address those big concerns. So it's how do we manage our large claimants better? And that's where our biggest spend has been. But part of that large claim category is encapsulated within pharmacy, and so we've got some proposals to try and address pharmacy. If you look right now at just the top 25 prescriptions within the county and inside the plan that you've got today, are just within 25 prescriptions alone, we're over $1 million in spend. And that's an individual prescription, not like everybody that's taking that prescription, but one person taking one prescription, 20, 25 of those, and we're over $1 million in spend. And so those have to be our big areas that we're trying to address. So our proposals here, the first one on the pharmacy side, we were talking about carving pharmacy out to a different pharmacy benefit manager. So today, it's managed by Optum. Optum is one of the largest pharmacy benefit managers in the country, which is good and bad. So Optum's been able to secure strong pricing because they're such a large benefit, PBM, pharmacy benefit manager. But on the backside, Optum also makes money on that. So what they negotiate with the manufacturers, because of their size, doesn't necessarily get passed on to the little guy, right? And in this case, you guys are the little guy, and I get, you're not used to being the little guy, but that's where we're at. And so they have what they call a spread pricing. So they'll pay the pharmacy one rate and bill your plan a different rate. And so they're paying the pharmacy less than what they're actually billing the plan. It's a common practice. It's not a practice we necessarily respect, but it's something that's commonly done across pharmacy benefit managers. There are a whole host of pharmacy benefit managers that have popped up to try and combat what you see these really big pharmacy benefit managers doing. And so they do something that they call a transparent pharmacy model, where they pay the pharmacy exactly what they're billing your plan, so it's one and the same. Now, they don't always get quite as good a discount, but they're passing on every discount that they get. And so even when they're not passing at all on, you're still getting a better discount than what you get once Optum takes their slice of the pie. Also, the drug companies give back rebates for each of these high-cost medications, so they're giving back a portion of it. Well, that rebate goes to your PBM or Optum, and then Optum distributes the amount that they see as fitting for your group. And we've got a contract on how much they have to provide, and we push them on that, try and get as much of those rebates as possible. But still, they're keeping a slice of that pie. So on the pharmacy side, our proposal is that we move to a transparent pharmacy management company, where it's not going to be managed by Optum. It does mean it's another outside party, but it'll integrate with your health plan today. And they'll print that pharmacy benefit manager on the employee's ID cards. And so it takes a lot of that profit away from the PBM that they're making today. So in exchange, the question is, how do they make their money? So they charge a flat administrative fee. So they charge a $6 per prescription fee, but that fee, we estimate, is multiples of magnitude lower than what Optum is making today. The one other thing that we want to address on pharmacy is that these manufacturers have different programs to try and help individuals pay for these medications, right? If you're charging $100,000 a year for a medication, well, you get called in front of Congress. And so what they do to help combat that is that they give money back to folks that can't afford it. Well, we're going to try and tap some of these manufacturer assistance programs to help pay for a portion of the cost of the medications. And so we do that by putting some exclusions on the plan on some of these medications. We tap the manufacturer assistance programs when possible, and if we can't fill it there, then we can ship those medications from Canada or find an alternative solution. And there continues to be a lot of innovation in this space. Even just today, Amazon announced that they are now shipping medications. They've opened their own pharmacy where they're shipping medications, and they're going to do so at a significant discount from others. So we're saying, we tap every solution we can tap on these high-cost medications, and if we are unable to successfully source this medication for an employee through one of these different avenues, then we go back and we fill it directly through a specialty pharmacy. So we won't exclude anybody from getting a needed medication, but rather, we just ask them to go through some hoops to try and get it for less before we fill that medication. And it's not a lot. Like I said, just if we touch 25 prescriptions, individual prescriptions inside your group, there's a million dollars of savings. So that's our pharmacy proposal. If we were to do that, if you look at those rate sheets that we had put together, the pharmacy program on its own pulls your income-
Brian, you have to bring those up?
Sure. All those up now. Okay, so here are the different rate sheets on this. So this first one here is, I get there's a whole bunch of numbers on this. But if you look towards the bottom, we've got our proposed renewal increase, and this is the rate sheet you're talking about, Gary, is it not?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we don't do anything, we're saying we need that 7% increase to the rates. And at this point, our rates are high enough. That is a pretty significant increase, in that if you look at, for an example, we have a lot of employees enrolled in this $1,000 deductible plan. It's our most popular plan. It's at $2,500 for a family, $2,540, and it's going to jump to $2,720, right? So at this point, even 7%, you know, amounts to some pretty significant dollars. Now, if we go to the pharmacy one alone, if we are able to tap all of these different programs, we get the additional rebates, we remove that spread pricing that Optum's getting, and then we tap the international shipping and the assistance programs, we figure we can pull out about $43 per member per month inside your plan. It's not per employee, but every single employee, spouse, or child on your plan, we're pulling out about $43 to spend, which in and of itself actually pulls you down from a 7% increase to what we're proposing here is actually a 0.79% decrease. We do have one other program that we've incorporated into this, and so let me talk a little bit about that one. It's this spousal HRA. So on the spousal HRA, what we're proposing on this is that your plan has become the plan of choice in the county. So anybody that has both themselves and a spouse working for big employers in the county, the county plan almost always wins as being the plan that the family enrolls in. And because it's a great plan, the coverage is good, and the premiums, the percentage that the employees have to pay, is fairly low. And that's hard to take away when that's part, one of the reasons that employees work for the county, right, is that they have great benefits. So our proposal, instead of taking it away from employees and saying, okay, we're no longer going to offer premiums at the level we're offering them, we're going to increase these premiums, our proposal is that we make the spouse's plan a better plan, so that more of these people will choose the spouse's plan. And so we do that by subsidizing the cost on a spouse's plan. And so we set up a health reimbursement account where we pay expenses under that spouse's plan, so that they essentially have a zero deductible plan. All those expenses are paid for under this plan. Now, they do have a cost to do that, to enroll in that plan, and you set up that cost that way, so that you don't have everybody just leave and jump on their spouse's plan. But rather, it's not the cheapest option. We peg the cost at that same as the $500 deductible option, but it's the best coverage. So those that say, well, I don't need the best coverage, I don't have a lot of health expenses, aren't going to enroll in it. But those that say, I've got a lot of health expenses, I need the best coverage I can get, and they have a coverage available through an employer, our hope is that they'll take that employer option, and the plan, the county paying their portion of the cost under their spouse's plan is much cheaper than being the primary insurer. So that's proposal two, and that's that spousal HRA line, and that pulls out an additional $9 per member per month. So I get this, again, back below the zero.
Brian, so for paying that, is that the premium, so the employee, employees' part of the premium, plus their deductibles up to an out-of-pocket max that would be paid?
Yep, so you reimburse both. So they, their premiums, you're not going to actually collect the premiums from them, but we're going to have set premiums on the plan, and then any expenses they incur to buy their spouse's plan above those premiums, they're getting that money reimbursed, plus their coinsurance and deductibles and things under their plan, up to their out-of-pocket max. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
One of the, one of the key components of this, I mean, is what we've just been talking about. If we have one large claim, and it doesn't have to be the million-dollar claim, but even one large claim saved $100,000, or we've already saved a chunk of change, just if there's one claim of that magnitude. And as Brian explained, what you're counting on is that folks that may have those kind of health issues would be in this scenario, this plan option.
Okay, so our last option here, and let me jump on a rate sheet here, turn the rate sheet here. So we've got, see, the first one's just all in if we don't do anything. The second one is if we only do the spousal HRA. We don't get a ton of savings immediately, but our hope is, down the road, we slowly pull a few people off, and then this is with both the pharmacy and the spousal HRA. And the next, we've got one with a program called Accolade. And actually, Chris is going to talk a little bit about Accolade, and how we anticipate Accolade is going to be able to make a difference for your members.
Hey, so I am, again, thank you for letting us come. We look forward to this, because, you know, it's a big deal to the county and to us as well. As we talk about Accolade, I've covered this before with the commissioners, so let's just review it in general in concept, and then if we need to get more specific, please ask me some questions. But in a given geographical area, and we have determined that this also exists within the county itself, there are variances in costs and quality in regards to care received. So it could be as simple as an MRI all the way up to a heart attack or a knee replacement or something like that. Heart attack's a little harder, because, you know, you've basically got the one hospital, but for things that are scheduled especially, not emergencies, we do see that different providers provide different outcomes. And the goal of an accolade ultimately, from a cost perspective, is how do we get in front of the large claims sooner, help the large claims become less expensive, and help the smaller claims stay small? And so Accolade is what is called a care coordination model. It comes on the front of all of your benefits. It will now be who your employees interact with. They will not interact with UMR. One of the other benefits of Accolade is they take these point solutions, so these pharmacy solutions, which could potentially be disruptive for the, you know, 25, or, you know, if we expand it, we're probably looking at about 50 people total. Well, we want to keep those disruptions to a minimum. Well, Accolade can take those disruptions, and they run point on all of that, and they know how all the programs work, and they know what's available. They have a claims database with literally billions of lines of claims where they can look, and we've asked them to identify the county and say, are there variances within the county where you think you can help? That was one of the concerns that Gary had, is we don't want to ship care out to Salt Lake or Denver. That's not what we want to do. Now, are there times that that's going to make sense? Yeah, absolutely, but ultimately, the goal is provide a better experience at lower costs. The lower cost is a result of finding the right provider, and it's not as much as maybe a differential in cost, but maybe they have better care. So they have better outcomes. You have less return visits, less infections, whatever the case may be, and take these point solutions and give a single point of entry for your members. Brian mentioned prescriptions and expenses. Our largest claimant we personally saw last year was just over $4.5 million. It was a mom of preemie twins. And one of the things in Accolade will do, right now, when you call UMR, you have this subset of customer service that you talk to. They're limited in what they can do. Accolade takes over. And so that preemie mom, you think about the amount of claims, those babies were in the hospital for a long time. With Accolade, you can talk to one, what they call, health assistant. And so you can call in, and I can get Natalie, and I can get Natalie's direct number, and I can call and talk to Natalie whenever I need to talk to somebody. Now, obviously, they have office hours, but if I understand that, I can always circle back and talk to the same person. And so we think the experience for the members of the county is going to be substantially better than what they're experiencing now, while we see costs and quality, quality go up, costs go down. And I do want to talk timing. We would be looking to implement this March 1st, because there is some, there is, there is a long implementation, because there are so many moving pieces that Accolade becomes involved in. So questions on that?
Commissioners, any questions for Chris regarding Accolade?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add a couple, couple things to that. Accolade, we actually reviewed a couple other, another product that provides similar care management services, care coordination services. This was the one that seemed the best fit for our size of organization and our area, and that's really why I asked them to bring this forward. The second thing that I'd like to share with you is in our meetings with the component units, this is the one thing that they related to the most, meaning that as healthcare is getting and has gotten more complicated, it's hard for individual users to navigate all of the different moving pieces. And we had a lot of positive feedback on this concept from the component units in terms of providing assistance for those that have had larger claims, how daunting it is to try to work through the myriad of billing and access and charges and secondary insurance and providers and network providers and so on and so forth. And so we do a lot of that for county employees, but obviously, it's much more difficult with component units. And so I think that the Accolade model comes at a good time and tool to try to increase that experience, and it also has some significant cost benefits for the plan. So I think it's really a win-win.
Thank you, Gary. Questions for either the representatives or Gary? Questions at the moment, Gary?
So I guess with that, you have five rate sheets, but the rate sheets are primarily different components of what Brian just went through. And, and so our recommendation is to include the spousal HRA, to begin in March with Accolade, and to move the pharmacy benefit manager to SmithRx at essentially a zero savings to the plan. I have zero savings, zero cost increase to the plan. And then implement Accolade in March, and I don't know if you had any new information on Brian, but I think that's about, we expect about a 3% savings on the premium with the Accolade model.
That's correct. If we do all three of them, we anticipate a 3% decrease from current rates. And these three programs really are, you know, fairly cutting-edge solutions. It's about everything we can come up with to start to influence the way your plan's running without starting to cut benefits, right? And so that's the next option. If we've got to cut costs on the health plan, is we've got to start cutting back on the benefits, unless we can manage these costs better, and this is, this is about everything we can do.
Gary, question? When we talk about cutting costs, that would also cause for discussion of more co-pay, shared cost too, would it not?
Yeah, obviously. I mean, you know, there's lots of ways to decrease the cost of the county, you know, decreasing benefits is a way, employees paying, increasing cost. employees paying increasing cost. Um, but we didn't, as as I've told you, I think all of you individually and collectively, um, that doesn't seem an appropriate discussion. Now, we've vetted everything that we can do uh short of that. The um prescription drug changes that we have here uh will have minimal disruption to employees, um which means they'll they'll have to get some new prescriptions renewed and updated cards and things like that. Um, but that's an area that we've got to do what we can in because costs are really out of control in that area. Um, the Accolade option, I think, is just going to be beneficial. Um, we're optimistic about what cost uh benefits uh we can realize. Um, in talking with Brian and his staff for the places that have already implemented, they've all seen a positive cost um reductions um uh in that regard. And the spousal H R A, I think it's worth a shot in that we have a lot of people, especially recently, that are on the county plan because it's the best plan, and we're seeing some of the cost increases driven by that. I don't think we'll have a lot of participants, but I think we we've got to try and see how this works. So I think overall, my feeling is is that um we we take and implement these things, we monitor them closely and um and hopefully see some some improvement uh in the growth. My my goal, as I told Brian and his staff, would be to have another uh zero premium increase next year. Um, we'll have to see if we can get some favorable outcomes on these large claims, but the just this year, the stock loss increase, Brian, was about four hundred thousand?
Yes.
Um, and um a seven percent is in the neighborhood of six hundred thousand if we don't do anything. Um, and um just on the uh just on the county side alone, um that would impact our budgets a little bit under four hundred thousand if we don't make any changes. Um, and so these seem to me like reasonable um steps to attack the specific problems that we've identified in terms of areas of growth and still have minimal uh impact on employees. As I pointed out at the last meeting, um, one of these drugs uh that we currently have employee taking or participant taking. Um, if we just buy that from Canada, the plan will save two hundred thousand dollars. Um, I wish I could explain to you why that makes any sense. It doesn't. Um, but until Congress fixes the drug pricing scenario, we're going to have to continue to look at these options. And in this particular case, drug is made in the United States, shipped to Canada. We're going to buy it back from Canada and save two hundred thousand dollars on the price. Um, is that bizarre? Yes, it's bizarre. Um, but I think we need to try to bet all the options to maintain a high quality of health coverage um at the lowest cost that we can right now, especially given the challenges the county's budget. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. So if I look at the proposals, I think the proposal you're recommending is the uh proposal, the underwriting worksheet with Smith R X and Accolade. Is that correct?
That's correct, with a cost decrease of minus point seven nine percent.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shaneville.
Gary, when was the last time that we went out to rebid for insurance in total?
Um. Um, are you talking, I mean, the stop loss portion, um, Brian, what was last year, uh, two years ago?
Stop loss? We bid that every year. In fact, we've sent it to thirteen carriers this year.
No, I'm not talking about stop loss. I'm talking about the carriers overall. I know that um it used to be under Blue Cross of Wyoming, and now we're under U M R. When was the last time that we went out to rebid in total?
Um, we have, we have not gone out to rebid in total since we moved to U M uh since we moved to U M R.
When was that?
Two thousand
fourteen, fourteen, I think.
Two thousand fourteen.
The one thing on the rebid question, if I might just um chime in for a second. With you guys, you're what's called self-funded. So you pay the claims, and it gets down to what is the contractual rate that the carrier has? It's not that the carrier um going from a Blue Cross to a U M R, they don't actually give us a price on your claims component. They give us a price on the administrative component, um which is a very, very small portion. Right now, we're paying like fifteen dollars or something like that per employee per month in admin fees. Um, and so it's the claims component. And what we found with U M R is their contractual rates are lower at a given provider than a Blue Cross is, um which is one of the reasons we haven't really looked at a new provider because it gets down to service issues and that administrative cost, not the physical cost of the claims.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions, commissioners? Anything more to add, Chris, Brian, Natalie? Gary?
No, I think we've we've beat it up pretty good.
Yeah, we do. So I see before us five proposals. It's H R's recommendation. The fifth one, which is the underwriting worksheet with Smith R X and Accolade. With that, commissioners, unless there's more questions, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Smith.
Uh, I move that we approve the proposal, the underwriting worksheet twenty twenty one, which cars out the prescriptions to Smith R S and has Accolade and also includes the spousal um insurance benefits, the whole enchilada, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Okay, we have a motion to approve as recommended by H R. Is there a second?
I'd second that, Chairman. I'd like clarification on that big enchilada to make sure that we're talking about the what we should be making this motion on.
Little guac on the top.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approving the recommendation by H R for health insurance. Any further discussion?
Must be close to lunchtime.
That's why the enchilada come up?
We're getting there, aren't we?
It's all right. It's been good.
It is Taco Tuesday.
Yeah, I wasn't expecting this avenue, so I'll just be honest. All those YouTube participants, they're like, what?
All right, with that, uh, we have a motion and we have a second to any further discussion. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign, motion carries. Gary, thank you very much. Brian, Chris, Natalia, thank you also for being with us and helping with this, and we appreciate the work you all have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody tomorrow, starting open enrollment. So for those of you on the call, uh, make sure you uh get on, get your open enrollment stuff done. Make sure you look at your uh um beneficiaries and uh get your information uh taken care of so you have insurance for the upcoming year. Thank you.
And that that includes commissioners as well, right, Gary?
Yeah, that's why I'm bringing it up. You guys are all.
Thank you, Gary. All right, with that, moving, moving on.
So thank you.
Well, thank you, Gary. Uh, moving on with Tab J, there's a request, Dean, a consideration for a second four H program office in Green River, and I believe with us today to present that is um Ms. Henry. Marty, are you out there? There you are.
I I am, yeah.
Marty, do you have anybody here with you or are you uh spine solo?
I am a Lone Ranger.
All righty, so Marty, with that, uh, the commissioners are willing to listen, so the floor is yours.
Well, thank you for your willingness. Um, I guess before I get started, I'll give a little bit of a background and try to explain why I sent lease after lease after lease in my packet, just to kind of give you a really broad understanding of of who actually has the reins in my current situation. Um, so U W extension Sweetwater County subleases from U W Outreach. Um, and that is who our current lease is held under. And I found out um roughly a month ago that Kyle Moore, the Associate Vice Provost for Enrollment Management for the University of Wyoming, and a Mr. Burt Reynolds, Vice President for Administrative Services for Western Wyoming Community College, um decided to take action on their Article Five, Number Four under the Review Approve uh Approval and Revision Guidelines. And that number four just reads that both the agreement of and the memorandum of implementation will be reviewed and updated at least every five years. And it shall be the responsibility of the dean of the of UW Outreach School or his or her designee to initiate these review discussions. And in that, it's our fifth year. We've come on that five-year mark and um Mr. Kyle Moore has come to the agreement with Mr. Burt Reynolds that they would like to move our office into another location within the college. Um, and so with that UW extension, Sweetwater County is being pushed out of our office um along with the it's no longer UW Outreach, it is um UW Admissions and Distance Learning. And then one other um entity, E O C, uh, that is Educational Opportunity Centers, and she's the coordinator and student advisor is in there with us as well. And roughly, we have about a three thousand square foot area for our office. And we've been there for over twenty-five years, and we have successfully filled up almost all of it. Um, along with my program, the extension program, we have a master gardener, um a sensible nutritionist who happens to be the best one in the state. She's pretty awesome. Um, my four H program, and we also have an administrative assistant, and I have been told that we can hopefully forecast that in the next three years, we will also be getting another area, not area, county specialist who will stay strictly in our county. And I've got my fingers crossed for range management because we get a lot of questions about range management. But um but extension UW admissions and the Educational Opportunity Centers, E O C, is being relocated to an office upstairs that is roughly a third the size that we are now in. If I go based off of what the square footage shows us on the floor plans that I sent you, you can't see them now, these ones here. Um, the lease says it's slightly different uh square footage. I'm not really sure which one to take is the most accurate, but if I go off of the floor plans that I've sent you, we are going to be moved into an office that is a third roughly of what we're in right now. And if we are picturing that visually, that basically means that every person in our office will have only one office with little to no storage space available within their offices. We will also be able to have one room to keep our office supplies in and a refrigerator. So we will be reduced down to no accessible storage, except they will be giving us some storage in the basement that is roughly about half of what we have now. They've also told us that we could purchase, extension could purchase um a shed and place somewhere on the grounds to keep additional storage in. So um, that also actually means not only will we not have the readily accessibility to our program supplies that I for one use on a very regular basis. I don't think I could say daily, but I can come pretty close to that. Um, we not only will not have that storage space and to have at easy access to our program supplies, but we will also no longer have a meeting room, which extension will no longer have a meeting room, which we used for staff meetings, for four H council meetings, horse development committee meetings, um onsite trainings, sensible nutrition classes, and sometimes for me temporary storage, especially this time of year when we are hosting the Little Shopper's Extravaganza. And I'm typically taking donations to use for that big event that we hold for the entire county. Um, so so essentially, if I were granted an office location with some um additional square footage for some kind of meeting area, then it would not only free up some space in our new soon-to-be location, but it would also provide a space for me to still be able to conduct official slash club meetings. Um, I would, I definitely have easier access to my program supplies, and thus I believe the four H program would not take a step back, but it would still be taking steps forward. Um, and and I believe that it will enable me to be able to even more reach our clientele throughout the county. Um, Green River being one location, Rock Springs being another location, it puts me that much closer to our McKinnon folks, our Jamestown folks, our Green River folks, along with also being in Rock Springs part-time, that still keeps me close to Farson and those folks out there. Um, I currently alone with just my four H program, take up roughly four hundred square feet of our office. And that includes my office and the supplies that I keep on hand. Um, if I were allowed that or more additional space for a meeting area in Green River, that would not only help our current space dilemma significantly, but I I'd, like I said, I think that it would secure the thriving of our youth organization instead of maybe taking those steps backwards. Um, and I I I would like to also say that I see this as being a, hopefully a temporary situation. Um, I that I would really like to be able to try to get something worked out with the Sweetwater Events Complex to maybe have an office someday onsite where the where the majority of the action takes place. Um, but uh but for now, this is, this is what I'm I'm hoping is the next best step to this scenario that I have presented.
Thank you, Marty.
I I'm sorry, I have one more. I'm sorry, just one more thing. Um, I would also like to point out that with the high hopes that we do get to hire another um area or county educator in the next three years, the the location that we are being put in um right now, as it is, does not have space for that person.
Thank you. Okay, so so basically your request, Marty, if I understand it, is to get another location in the Green River area.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, commissioners, questions for Marty? Um, I got one before everybody goes, just so I know. There's a lot of moving parts in this, Marty. There's you, Western Wyoming, University of Wyoming, and the county. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. I know somewheres in the M O U, it talks about the designated designated liaison for the extension office with the county commissioners and Western Wyoming. Are you that person?
Yes, I am the county coordinator for the Sweetwater County UW Extension Office.
Which would make you the liaison, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. That's the only question I had at this moment. So commissioners, questions for Marty?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, Marty, you said something that just uh sticks out. It has probably nothing to what we're going to decide here today, but you said there's somebody from range like range management coming into your organization. Uh, the V L M obviously handles all all range management issues uh on federal lands. So I I that kind of, I'd just like you to tell me why you said something like that.
Well, so we are being told that hopefully, within the next three years, we will be permitted to hire with your consent another county educator. Um, the last one we had that is no longer in our office was a nutrition specialist. Um, Josie Josephina Isabaro, I believe was her name. Um, I'm sorry, I set a timer so that I wouldn't go over.
You're good. You're good. Turn your timer off.
Okay, um.
Teach that to some other people. That's awesome. Thank you.
I I personally, we I personally had my fingers crossed for a range management specialist because we get a lot of calls um from people wanting to touch base with extension because we have a range management area. And they just want to touch base with someone in the area because maybe they're wanting to potentially buy a property in Sweetwater County, and they want to know what the soil types are, what the water rights might be, what any given kind of question that is way above my head. Um, but I I say I have my fingers crossed for range management specialists because that's what we get the most calls for in our office.
Thank you, Marty.
I would think that you would refer them to the B L M, though. I I just don't understand why we'd, there'd be that kind of duplication in the county.
Well, typically, we actually send them off to the surrounding area educator um that is maybe in another county that is supposed, that serves Sweetwater County in addition to their duties, um just because they they called extension, so we. Just because they, they called Extension, so we, we move them to our next range management specialist and Extension closest to us.
Question, follow-up on that, Marty, for me. It sounds like within the 4-H extension, you have people with specified skills that you reference people to rather than to another federal agency. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Other questions, commissioners? Commissioner Shanefield?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Marty, I have a few questions about just what your process, if we approve this today, what your process is going to look like moving forward. First of all, have you located any areas that you may want to put your office in Green River? And how you're going to plan on staffing that moving forward if this is approved?
So I have not, because our current lease is $3,500 a year roughly. And the county pays for that lease for us. I foresee that our move will obviously come at a lower rate, hopefully at least half the price. So finding another location with that price is pretty difficult. And it's, it's actually near impossible. And where we had to cut our budgets this year, everyone had to cut their budgets this year. I know that it is also going to be near impossible for you to offer any supplemental monies to cover that lease. So I was hoping that maybe there might be some county facility in Green River that might be available for my use. In terms of staffing, it would be just me. The, the university would like to see us keep the main Extension building or office in Rock Springs. Just because they think the bulk of our clientele are at that end of the, of the county. And they're, they're not totally off, but, but Green River and Jamestown and McKinnon are really growing. So I, I don't know that that would be the truth for long, but it would just be me in that one particular office in Green River if I was so granted.
Mr. Chairman, follow-up question?
Sure, Commissioner Shanefield.
Have you, Marty, talked to Western to see if they have availability in, since they're cutting your space? If they have availability in their Green River building? And maybe allowing that to, I'm not sure about the county option. But I'm not saying that's off the board. I'm just wondering if you've had a conversation with Western to see if they have room for you in their space?
So I have not specifically, I've been left out of a lot of the negotiations. I've been the, the one that gets the information after it's all decided. And I, I believe that my, when I first found out about the potential move or the move, I should say, I, I had a lot of trouble with it, a lot of trouble because I didn't know what we were, what we were going to do. And I, I expressed those concerns specifically on the amount of space that we would be losing. And I, I expressed those to my superiors. And they told me that they would convey those to Kyle Moore and Burt Reynolds, who were in the midst of negotiations. I have not specifically reached out to Mr. Burt Reynolds to find out if there might be the opportunity for me, but I would, I would be more than willing to investigate that and find that out. I have a meeting with him tomorrow to finalize the move details. So I, I would be happy to find out and get back to you on that.
I would think that that would probably make sense. I know when I worked for 4-H, we did use their facility in Green River quite frequently. And I know that they had some spaces available on their basement floor currently, so.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanefield. Commissioners, other questions?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd, go ahead.
I guess my first question is, Marty, I know you talked about one of the difficulties at the college. It would be your area wouldn't have a specific conference room, but knowing like for years I did rotary and they had extra rooms for us. Would the college still have rooms you could reserve and use as common space? For those situations, you may not have it in your area, but I would wonder if they would still be available in the college as a whole?
So they have told us that we would still be able to reserve space. I've ever, I've never actually thought about it for our, our staff meetings because we have utilized their classrooms for big meetings, like our 4-H councils or, or things like that. And they said that that would still be available, COVID willing. But, but no, I, I have not actually even brought that even into mind for our, our monthly staff meetings.
Okay. And I guess the other question I had was, I think you'd said that your current space is how much?
So our current space with all three entities is, I think, 2,980 square feet. The lease says something slightly, says something different. But I also know that years back before I got here, UW paid to have the office that we're in remodeled for Extension. So I don't know if that made the square footage increase, and maybe that's why it's different on this floor plan that I was given by the college or but I also think it would have been updated in the lease. So I don't, I don't really know why there are two different square footages there. One says 2,980 square feet, and the other one says 2,351 square feet.
Okay. I just thought for whatever reason in the communication we had about this situation, it was less than that. I thought it was like 1,475.
So in our communication back then, in the early stages, I thought it would be just Extension moving to the small space. And just Extension is allowed, I'll try really hard. I have highlighted the rooms on the floor plan. The ones that are highlighted are our spaces. So it's a little less than half of the square footage the entire office holds. And I want to say it's, it's somewhere around that 1,350 square footage to maybe 14.
That would be the questions I would have at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Other questions, commissioners? No questions. Where I, as I listen carefully, Marty, I, I go back to there's several moving parts or several balls, entities. And I think one of, not only with those entities, there's also the MOU and the contract for services and that. And I, I really, I mean, this is just me. Commissioners can make their decision for themselves, but one, I, I really think we need to sit with our attorney and review those MOUs and that contract. And make sure that before we move forward, if it's their desire as a commission, that we make sure that we have included all the players and all the i's and t's are crossed. And in that same vein, you know, you talk about commissioners approving to hire somebody. You know, thank God it isn't right now because I hope you understand we're under hire and freeze. Second of all, we have budget coming up and that type of thing. And right now projected, and I hope the third quarter numbers are better, but at the end of our second quarter numbers, we've projected about, I think just low over $6 million short for the county. And that type of thing. Now, when we talk about the University of Wyoming, I listened to the governor's presentation yesterday on budget. Did you happen to get a chance to listen to that, Marty?
I didn't.
All right. It's, it's on YouTube. It's on the governor's page. I highly recommend you to listen to it because one of the things he said, along with already the present cuts that UW has experienced, the additional cuts, there will be more and greater. So we don't know what those look like. But part of that to keep in mind is he also said the state in their budgeting is going to look at those obligated statutory requirements for them to fund. Because funding is going to be so short. Raises flags in my mind when it comes to dollars, it comes to wonder what he's thinking and wonder who's going to get what, who's not going to get what. So my, you know, commissioners can move forward with a motion to approve or no motion or whatever. As chairman, I would encourage the commissioners to take time, listen to what you've asked. We need to sit, I believe, if they don't as commission, I do as chairman, need to sit with our, our attorney and really look over those, that MOU and look over those agreements. And make sure that we have had the conversations with those that truly are part of all of this. And also I would encourage our commissioners to kind of stay their decision until we get into the budget to see what the impacts are. And not to commit to something that we truly don't know at this point in time whether we can or can't as additional costs. So that's my only comments. So with me saying that is, as a commissioner, if other commissioners have no other comments or questions, I would say the floor is open for their pleasure. Before we, Commissioner Johnson, I'm sorry, let me interject one thing. I want to go to our attorney and ask him a question. John, is there anything you feel we haven't covered?
I think that, Mr. Chairman, that you, you've addressed it well. The, the options before the, the board is that you, you, you can provide no motion at all. You can provide motion to approve as is and in preparation for the changes that Ms. Henry has identified may take place. You can do a motion to approve to get a vote. And that could include a potential denial based on the current circumstances wherein those, those, those anticipated changes have not taken place yet. You can all do a motion to postpone to gather all of the additional facts and questions that were placed on the table, which would include the potential to, as, as the chairman identified, look at what costs are associated, not just with the expansion in the space, but also with the program in general and see how this non-statutory requirement fits in with the budget decisions that this, this board will be making in April. So again, those are the four options, no motion, a motion to approve based on potential changes, a motion to receive a vote and a motion to postpone. Those are your four options before the board.
Thank you, John. Sorry to have cut you off, Commissioner Johnson. So I'll give the floor to you now.
I appreciate that very much and I appreciate what John has added because what I was about to say, I won't be here to fight, fight the budgeting process in the coming year, but I know it's going to be very, very difficult. And I think the way you outlined what should happen is right on. And I think the, I think it would be better not to have a, a vote at this point in time, but it's up to the, my co-commissioners on that. But I think your, your comments are spot on.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other commissioners, Commissioner Shanefield?
I agree with Commissioner Johnson and I, I would love to hear back from Marty on maybe trying some negotiations with WWCC and leaving their lease amount the same because it's exceptionally reasonable and maybe allowing them to, to use some space over their Green River office since they're cutting down their space so much. I think that that makes sense and I think that the college has been very accommodating already. So that may be an option that makes everybody happy and we don't have to worry about it affecting our budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanefield.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Lloyd?
I'll reiterate and I'll just say I agree with Chairman Johnson and yourself and want to put it on the counter that Commissioner Johnson and I once again have agreed. It's like three times in the last four meetings, so that's pretty awesome. But with that being said, I do also agree. I do think we need to look at the college, the Western Wyoming piece there. And when we talk about that additional piece, that's a couple of years down the line. I think that's premature to look at this point. And, and I do agree with our current stats. I think we should take a real strong look at that contract and to make sure we're doing right by it and go from there. I do say I also like the idea of having meetings together because anytime I can meet with someone named Burt Reynolds would be pretty neat also. So, but I do think we should hold on a vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Any other comments, commissioners?
I concur with everything that's been said so far with my fellow commissioners and wait and see, I think is best and find a little more information.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Not to put any words in anybody's mouth, but I would give it a pause, an education, educational pause for thought and allowance for a motion if someone desires or no motion. After 15 seconds, at this time, I do not hear a motion. Do not hear a motion. Looks like no decision at this time, which is good, Marty. At, you know, at least it doesn't take it off the table. So I would suggest follow-up meeting with Western Wyoming and please let Commissioner Shanefield or Commissioner Lloyd know as he does work with the fairgrounds and that type of thing. And we'll look forward to talking to you in the future, okay?
Thank you.
Very well done. I appreciate your presentation.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Lloyd?
Could that information also go to Gene just because he is our building person to run it through that way?
You exactly right. You can. Make sure you and Lauren get it, get it to Gene as well.
Or, or Marty could go to Gene.
There you go. Very good.
Just trying to make sure our, our irons are crossed.
Well, thank you. Anything else for Marty? Marty, thank you. Be safe. Keep up the good work. Moving on, we'll go move into TAB K and it's a approval of hazard pay policy for Sweetwater County Sheriff's Office. And here to present this is Sheriff Grossnickel. Welcome, Sheriff Grossnickel.
Mr. Chairman, glad to see you again. The, the title of it is a little misleading. It's not an approval of our policy here at the sheriff's office. This is to be transparent and, and let you know that we have implemented a hazard pay policy in particular to deal with some of the CARES Act money and hazard pay for our deputies that, as you all know, don't have the luxury of, I guess it's a luxury of hiding behind plexiglass or, or closing the doors. We were, we have to go out there and deal with it and, and they are exposed, whether it's out on the street or in the detention center or even in the, the public areas of, of the sheriff's office to this exposure. And again, we want to be transparent. We've been working with Christina and Commissioner Shanefeld. We're aware that this money might not come through, but if it does for the timeframe that, that we're allotted, we do want to enact that hazard pay for the men and women that are out there fighting the fight.
Thank you, Sheriff. Questions for the sheriff, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Shanefield, thank you.
Sheriff, are you planning on just holding off until you hear back and tracking that time and then back paying? Is that how you're planning on doing that?
Well, back pay it per se, but we are going to wait to make sure that that goes through here next week or so. And again, Christina has been great, as you all know, and, and we're aware of that timeframe. And I did speak with Mr. McLean last night and we'll be able to code it correctly. Just as long as we are crossing our t's and dotting our i's, we all know how the, the government works, whether it's the federal or state level, so.
Sheriff Grossnickel?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shanefield, any other questions for the sheriff? Sheriff, I have one or two. It's very obvious that the slipboard has not approved this grant application because we just signed it or sending it off. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. What is a contingency plan? It goes twofold. The first one is contingency plan that the slipboard does not approve this. Will your officers not then receive any pay?
They will not receive the hazard pay, correct?
Okay, now, let's presume slipboard does approve it. And we do follow as spelled out to go back during this time and pay them. And at the, some point in time in the future, we get audited by the feds on guard to CARES money, which I, if they don't, I'd be surprised. How, how are we going to protect ourselves if they were to call this money back?
All right, I, I would assume you'd say, how, how would we have to repay this if?
Yeah, what's, what's the plan to? If we have to repay this back? Has there been any of that conversation?
There has not, and that's why we've been hesitant with Christina to, to go ahead and act this. Um, there's been a lot of research that she has done. Um, and if she at all uh doesn't feel as though it will uh meet that criteria, we will not go forward with it.
Yeah, I, I think that's a possibility. But now, let's talk about the good side. Commissioner Smith, go ahead and then I'll finish mine up.
Uh, having spent uh tens of hours with the slipboard over the last few months, um, I will say that the Attorney General's Office is very conservative and thorough in their reviews and recommendations to the board. And if they do recommend something and it gets approved, um, I, I, I feel very, very confident that it would not, during an audit, it would not be an issue. Um, they have, and I have fought with them about some items that uh I felt were um, should be approved and, and they would not recommend that approval. So um I, I, yeah, if they approve it, I think we're in really, really good shape.
Good. I'm glad, I'm glad you shared that because I knew that you were busily involved with it. Now, the update from WCCA um was a point that Jeremiah made last night was, and Sheriff, you need to listen to this carefully too, is they're hoping within a couple of days, by the end of this week, they'll get a ruling from the governor's office with a strong belief that uh these types of requests could get improved, could get approved. So it's looking better and better than what it was when we first ventured down this road, but uh I, I, I'm I'm holding out that uh the, the governor and GA will uh attorneys general will uh AG will approve, you know, come off of their stance and help us out. So um, I only bring that up because I think it's things we need to keep an eye on and we need to prepare ourselves for, even though I agree with Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Shanefield that the likelihood of audit to pay back won't happen if the AG approves it, governor, but uh still has to be in the back of our minds as we move forward. So with that, any other questions for Sheriff Grossnickel? No questions, commissioners? What's your pleasure? With this grant? Or with this policy? I got, I presume, John, the way, do we have to approve it? The way it's written? Sheriff?
Uh, again, it, it wasn't for approval of the policy. Um, we've never had our policies approved by the board. Um, it, it was uh the, the follow-up letter that was with it, um asking for a signature to, to go forth if this is approved through the, the CARES Act money.
Oh, okay. So the signature will be on the application for CARES Act. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. So with that, we don't need an approval. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, we're good. Move forward. Thank you for sharing and thank you for uh keeping us up to date, John. Sheriff.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Have a good day.
Thank you. Moving on with uh the addition to our amended agenda now is TAB L, which is approved support letter for Red Desert Clinic. And uh to present that is our clerk, Ms. Lane. Ms. Clerk Lane, good morning again.
Good. Is it still morning? Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Um, Christina was involved in helping the um the rural healthcare district and the High Desert Rural Healthcare District in Wamsetter. Um, they would like to put in for the um coronavirus relief grant application as due by Thursday. In order to do that, they had to have certification from the county commissioners that they are a um special district within Sweetwater County. I have sent out that you should have a copy of the letter in front of you. I did wanna point out, I did change one word where it says on the second sentence that the Sweetwater Board of County Commissioners certify. It said confirmed. Um, but the grant asked for certification, so we did change that word to certify. I also have Ms. Rosemary Lanta online if you have any questions for her in regards to what types of um relief they're asking for.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Commissioners, any questions for our clerk? No questions? I will say then, commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding this request, this approval letter?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Shanefield?
I make a motion to um approve this letter and authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, have a motion to approve and authorize chairman to sign. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same, pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Lane. You have the original with the other documents?
Yes, it's in Sally's office.
Thank you. Okay, anything else to come before the commissioners at this time? With that, uh, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session uh regarding real estate personnel and contract.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by the, I believe Commissioner Shanefield, is that okay? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Pose same sign. We'll move into executive session. We'll have Gene Legursky and Gary McLean.